Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into closed session. Welcome back to the October 12, 2021, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. I messed that up. Could everyone please stand and do the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report out from closed session, please.
Report of closed session from today, October 12th, Item 1, pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson, regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Forward action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to staff announcements. This is time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Leslie Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the board. Two things I wanted to bring up today. First is really good news about last Tuesday, the governor signed Senate Bill 303. Senate Bill 303 was authored by Senator Borges, and essentially what it did was provides an additional two years for property owners who have been damaged by fire disaster, who were hitting the five-year deadline to acquire or construct comparable property to get it finished. So at least for our constituents in the Butte Fire area, their five-year deadline came and went a year ago in September. We worked with Senator Borges, and he authored a bill that would provide a two-year deadline going extending until the COVID-19 emergency termination date or March 4, 2022, whichever occurs sooner. So, good news for Calaveras County and also Lake County as it happens. Secondly, the grand jury, as you know, in their report felt that I should report out to the board periodically on how we're doing with our backlog, so I thought I'd just take a minute and give you the statistics. When we closed the roll July 12th, we had 4,745 events that were not valued. That would be what we would call a backlog. As of today, we have 9,230 events to value. 4,635 of those are prior year events, in other words, also known as the backlog. 1,753 of those are new construction with no completion yet, but they continue to need valuation as of January 1st. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on those statistics and make the absolutely delightful announcement that Senate Bill 303 was finally signed by the governor. It took almost a full month.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Lisa Medina. If she's not ready, we can move on to Ms. Cory Allen.
Good morning, Chairman Stoppa, members of the board, Cory Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. Specifically today, I wanted to give just a brief update for public health. First of all, in relation to the measles situation that we reported out last week. So I wanted to inform the public and the board that that matter has been concluded. I want to thank all of our medical professionals, professionals, the health department staff, the community who came together to make sure that there was no further incident to which there wasn't. So right now, due to the timeframes that it takes for measles to occur and wrap up, all of those have been resolved, and we no longer have a continued worry. Just know that measles is very contagious, and it is a serious disease. It's preventable through vaccines, so we encourage people to really check their own and their children's vaccine status to make sure that they are safe from the measles. The second thing I wanted to report out is very briefly on our COVID-19. We currently have 39 active cases, two active hospitalizations. But what I'm excited to see is that we're almost at 55% fully vaccinated within the eligible population. We're continuing to really aim for the younger 14 and older and 12 and olders to continue to strive towards vaccine as we move forward. And so for now, that's where we're at with the vaccine, with both vaccine and with COVID-19. I want to put a huge shout out to the staff at the health department who have continued to work tirelessly, including through weekends, to make sure that we stay on top of this pandemic and to those that are manning the COVID hotline for the team. So with that, just wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to hear about how we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Mr. Stoppa, I have a question. Ms. Allen, do we have staff working over the, on the weekends to answer calls and to do the COVID callbacks?
No, we actually are Monday through Friday, and of course, holidays and weekends are off. We do, if there's any voicemails, respond to them as soon as we return to the office.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Lisa Medina.
Mr. Chair, this is John, your OES Director. She did mention in the chat that she was having some audio problems.
Okay, thank you, John. Is there any other further staff comment?
There is no other. IT is working on her speaker, so I don't.
Yeah, I know. We can move on. We can pick something up for later if it's important. With that, we'll move to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Maybe if Lisa's got her speaker working, she can make a comment now. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. I believe OES would like to pull Item 9 for discussion.
Yes, sir. I would appreciate that.
Okay. Any board members that would like to pull any items? Any staff members that would like to pull any further items? Or public?
There are no public requests.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the board members.
I apologize. Let's all entertain a motion to move the remainder of the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Callaway, for.
So move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garamini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Now, number nine, Mr. Osborne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable board members. Good morning. I asked that this item be pulled. I errantly attached the, an incorrect final version of the contract, and I believe that our board clerk has, has the latest version to distribute to you. Is that right, Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you. The difference is we had some incorrect numbers in there. The contract that Stacy has for you reflects the correct version and the correct dollar amounts.
Has the board all had time to review it? Because I have a request moving into this. I would like to go back and revote and recuse myself from number six as we proceed also. Because of a contract with MOU with CCWD, I apologize. I meant to recuse myself on the initial vote from that, but I would like to go back and, if the board's willing to go back and revote on the entirety of it because I voted yes on that and.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item 6 and Item 9.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board, and now we're working on six again. Thank you. Or number nine, and we'll go back to six afterwards and I'll.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve Item Number 9 amendments.
Okay, I'll accept that, but I'm going to see if there's any public comment briefly first. And everyone can thank me for thoroughly confusing this.
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Garamini for Item 9.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
To John. John, does $400,000 ever extend further for this contract?
Microphone.
It's on.
It's on.
Oh, I can barely hear you.
Yeah, it's not really picking up, Supervisor Chafanelli.
I'm sorry, John. Can you hear me now?
There you go. Yes.
What exactly are we getting for this $400,000? I mean, we haven't had an update lately from them, so we don't know what projects. Are we adding projects, a certain area of trees to this? It doesn't exactly say what we're doing, other than we're giving them another $400,000 to cut down some more trees, but where are they? How many are there? What are we getting for this?
We have a presentation for you, Supervisor. I believe it's Number 18, 16 or 18.
Number 18 is attached to this $400,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to you, Ms. Follendorf, for Number 6 real quick briefly, and I will be right back.
We have consent agenda item number 6. Is there any board comment? Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
With that, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item number 6.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Select the 401 obtained.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. Thank you, board. What time do we have? Let's see.
9:18.
9:18. We're making good time. We'll move on to the irregular agenda, Item 18, informational item, OES. Receive a tree mortality program implementation update from TSS Consultants. Mr. John Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm joined today by Tad Mason of TSS Consultants. And let me share a screen here. Can, everybody should be seeing the the slide presentation with TSS Consultants. Is that what we see?
Projects completed 2017 through 2021.
Yes, sir. Okay, Tad, are you online, sir? I saw that he was in the meeting, Tad.
John, I show him as a panelist.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
There you are. Good morning, Tad.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for unmuteing me. Good morning, Chairman Stoppa and county supervisors. This is the latest update on the tree mortality program. We've been implementing since 2017, and you can see from the list in front of you there, we've completed 35 projects. This is with the use of two surveys. We've surveyed the entire county twice now, and the bottom line is removed a little over 10,500 trees in that timeframe. So with this five-slide deck, we'll just do a quick overview of the projects and the upcoming projects as planned. Next slide, John. Great. So moving forward, this is a schematic of the projects that are planned with this third survey. Due to the relatively high rate of tree mortality, working with the Director of OES, we decided to go with the third round here countywide. Projects are highlighted in different colors here. The red zone is the Butte Fire Zone, which we are staying clear of, but the rest of these projects are underway. The orange project to the right is Project 36, which is in a snow zone. And for that reason, we've launched the invitation to bid for a tree service company to come in and remove these trees before the snow flies. We're expecting a proposal by October 21st. The purple zone is Project 39, basically looking at the Highway 4 corridor up to Big Trees Village. The yellow zone is Project 37, west of Highway 49, of course, and that's really front country focused and quite a few hardwoods in that front country. But it's unfortunate, we are seeing quite a bit of mortality in the blue oaks these days, so this could be a fairly busy project. Blue is the Project 38. And then that pretty much, and then, oh, of course, Project 40, we've got Moke Hill, Willcomy Hill to West Point to round out the projects. On to the next slide. As I mentioned, we are seeing a fair amount of mortality. In the upper elevations is primarily white fir, incense cedar, and some ponderosa pines still, unfortunately. As far as the front country, we're seeing blue oak and some madrone mortality. With the drought conditions, basically, this is not unexpected, unfortunately, but we're all praying for rain. Next slide. This is an example of what we're seeing in the oak, in the front country, unfortunately. We're going to monitor these closely in the spring. Hopefully, some of these will leaf out, but we'll be following that closely. Next slide. Okay, so just an update on the right-of- entry forms, of course. Before we can come in and treat mortality along county roads, we have to have a right-of- entry form from the property owner. This has been a little bit of a challenging situation. We've got some pushback from landowners concerned about us being on their property for a variety of reasons, but we continue to conduct outreach to the homeowners associations. We issue a monthly press release, and we've sent out right-of- entry forms a couple of times now, even with highlighting this is the final notice. So all in all, we're seeing a participation rate a little bit less than 50%. We will continue to conduct outreach. We'd like to see that ramp up, but it has been challenging, to be candid. Surveys across all of the projects are underway, and as we receive enough right-of- entry forms to put together a project, we will work on an invitation to bid and work with the admin office to launch that and get them out. This project schedule will carry us over to next year, and we're hoping to have everything wrapped up by October of 2022. But, you know, a lot of that depends on ongoing tree mortality. The state continues to underwrite the cost of this program with a direct payment of 75, coverage of 75%. On top of that, another 10% is covered for admin. So 85% contribution from the state is helpful. With that, I am going to hand the microphone back to John. John, back to you.
Thank you, Tad, and then I do have. This is our most updated chart on our recovery. So, Tad, did you want to talk a little bit about the DSRs and the recovery?
Right. So this is a summary of, as John noted, the DSR payments from the state. If you could scroll down a little bit, John, we can see the top of the columns of the way. There we go. And you can see, you know, moving left to right, when the reimbursement form was submitted to CalOES and then the DSR number, trees removed over time, total cost. Total cost reflects the cost of TSS Consultants as well as the tree service companies' costs to actually remove targeted trees. There's the 75% cost share. On top of that, admin allowance of 10% for a total of 85% reimbursement. LATM, this is, CalFire was participating to cover 25% of the costs. That is no longer the case, unfortunately. But far right column, you'll see total reimbursement minus costs. Bottom line, county has expended about $124,000 for the removal of 10,500-plus trees. This equates to bottom line cost. The county have a little bit less than $12 a tree. All in all, not a bad investment. Any questions?
I'll just add to that, Tad, the $68,508 that you see reflected here. We have requested that total amount from CalFire. That's the remaining LATM funds. We did our last request to them last week for a little over $18,000 to finish that portion out. So that, this $124,090 you see, we expect to see about half of that or a little over half of that from CalFire.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Garamini.
Thank you. Tad, John, thank you very much. When we talk about the admin allowance, that money's coming back to our Calaveras County, correct? That's our admin or is that TSS admin?
That is our admin amount, and what we have historically done with that 10% is roll it back into the program to reduce, reduce our out-of-pocket.
Thank you.
Ms. Callaway.
What about the trees that are facing Highway 4 or the trees that are facing Highway, what, 26 and the Butte Fire? Are they covered under this program even though they're on, facing a state highway?
No, we're unable to work within the Caltrans right-of-way. And as far as the Butte trees go, the Butte trees are not included in this particular project. That's another project.
So these are trees only that impact county roads?
Yes, ma'am.
Are each of the projects go out to bids separately?
Yes, ma'am.
So it could be the same contractor or a different contractor?
Yes, over each project.
So when, as we move forward, where will the balance, because CalFire monies will be, will have been spent or received? And there will be some PG&E funds, possibly, John? And will the balance, will any of that come out of general fund as we move forward with these new projects?
If you'll recall, Madam Supervisor, it's been probably 18 months ago, the board was kind enough to allow us to use approximately $300,000 to offset the unreimbursed costs of this program. We have about $136,000 or $138,000 of those funds left. Obviously, we do our best to safeguard those funds and seek reimbursement wherever we can. And in the future, if LATM does not come back, we would use those funds to offset our operating, the unreimbursed operating costs.
If I understood correctly, it was less than 50% of property owners are returning right-of-entry forms?
Right about 50%, yes, ma'am.
That's frightening. Is there anything we can do or the supervisors can do or you can do?
So what we've been doing here in the OES office, actually, we revamped our press release and did some more outreach with it. And last week, I received several calls from folks who had some questions. And once we were able to answer those questions, they were, they stated that they were going to be mailing in forms. From a supervisor's standpoint, if you guys would continue to support and celebrate this program, not only is this removing hazards from our county roadways, you know, these dead and dying trees represent dead and dying fuel for our forests when it comes to wildfire. So it is also, aside from protecting our roadways, a good fuel mitigation program, having removed over 10,000 trees from the county and from the forest that will be not able to burn now. So we continue to celebrate that. I attended, thanks to you, the 2Care tour last week and the 2Care Summit. And I was able to speak to the folks that were there at that regarding the program and hopefully bring some more awareness to the folks that attended that.
Thank you. And one more, Mr. Osborne. Could you please send us that last chart about funds received and where? Because it was a little difficult to see and it was not in our board packet.
Yes, ma'am. I'll do that right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Any further board comments? Mr. Toffnelli.
Yes, thank you, John, for this presentation. But again, I saw this presentation, what was here, and I was hoping there was a little bit more to this presentation than what was in the packet here. Again, I go back to the $400,000 that we just approved. It doesn't explain what that's for. I know it's to take down trees, but are we, what areas are we expending that to? You just, what currently we've done in your graphic really didn't say that. Do you have specific items or specific areas that you're intending to use that for? Or is it overall project as you go along and come up with projects through surveys?
So the $400,000 is the project management portion of this program. That's TSS Incorporated, who operates the program for us. It provides for professional foresters. It provides for the surveys, the development of the projects, as well as the administrative work of, with the front office, our front office, to release the projects. The projects that we have now were in the presentation and are four projects at this point. Tad, do you recall a tree count off the top of your head?
A total tree count so far is approaching 600 of these upcoming projects.
And one of the features of this program is as we develop them, we incorporate a certain amount of what we call add-on trees for property owners that oftentimes find us working in the area and realize the benefits of it and return those ROEs late. So we have increased utilization of the program when they see folks out working and when they see the work done. We actually take down each tree and remove all of the slash, all of the limbs and the tree itself from the property. Save the fact that if we can't remove the tree safely or the property owner requests that we leave it.
Are these funds recoverable? Part of the recoverable funds, they are?
Yes.
Under the 10% admin part of it or overall costs?
Overall costs.
Overall costs for tree removal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further board comments? Ms. Callaway.
I do want to compliment TSS because I have received no complaints within the last eight months of slash on the ground that needs to be removed. So I appreciate their attention to detail with their crews that are in the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I would like to have a shout-out to my foresters. Much of the work that we do in support of this program is working alongside contractors that are removing trees and slash, as Madam Supervisor noted. And it is a big part of our work, making sure that the tree service companies are compliant with the forest practice rules and best practices. So, thank you.
If there's no further board comment, I'll ask for public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Thank OES and TSS consultants. Any last comments or questions from the board members? Looks not. So, thank you. We'll move on to item 19, action item. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, select one member of the Board of Supervisors to act as the 2022 CSAC representative and one member to act as the alternate for the CSAC Association year beginning November 29th, 2021. Ms. Callaway, are you comfortable with?
Yes, I would like to stay as our board's representative to CSAC.
Okay, I'm comfortable with being the alternate as long as the rest of the board is. With that, I'll ask for a public comment briefly.
There is no online public comment.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a
I'll move aside, Mr. Chair, with the two mermaids of the representative and alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Hopefully, we get a B back in person here soon in Monterey. Item 20, resolution, Human Resources. Adopt a resolution approving changes for appointment, appointed department heads, confidential and upper, let me clear my mouth, and unrepresented employees effective October 23rd, 2021, consistent with the modified contract with Service Employees International Union, Local 10 to 1, ending September 20th, 2026. Ms. Hawkins.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. I'm bringing before you today a resolution directing the increases COLAs, benefit changes, consistent with what we have already granted to SEIU and will be bringing forward from other bargaining units shortly. It has been a practice for unrepresented to follow SEIU. And so our unrepresented makeup has changed over this past year. So now it consists of our appointed officials, our confidential employees, and then just a few other classifications that still fall under unrepresented. And so what we're bringing forward is a 4% COLA for the first year and a 3% for four years after for a five-year, I can't say contract, since we don't really have a contract for unrepresented. And then also the cost sharing for increased health. I would like to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Callaway.
Oh, no, sorry.
No worries. Any board questions? Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We'll ask for public comment.
There is no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf, and a second by Ms. Callaway. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? 5-0 vote to the board. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, board.
Item 21, action item, Human Resources. Introduce, after a waiver of the reading requirements and ordinance adopting changes consistent with the modified memorandum of understanding with Service Employees International and Local 10 to 1 for certain elected officials and authorize summary publication of the ordinance. Ms. Hawkins.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. This resolution is also bringing forward changes consistent with our other bargaining units. It is bringing forward a 4% COLA for the first year and then a 3% COLA for the next four years, the last one being October 2025, and then a split in future healthcare increases. And this is the, an action item. And then if the board approves today, we will be bringing the resolution back on October 26th.
Any board questions? Public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Bring it back to the board. Entertain a motion.
I'll introduce this ordinance and waive reading, adopting changes to the memorandum of understanding with the Service Employees International.
We have a motion by Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board. Item 22, resolution, Human Resources. Adopt a resolution approving an equity adjustment for the position of Director of Planning effective October 23rd, 2021. Ms. Hawkins.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources, Risk Management Director. We have been recruiting for the position of Planning Director since the retirement of Peter Maurer. And this has become a very challenging recruitment. We have seen through the last year and a half with COVID, there has been a large amount of retirements throughout public service. And with that large amount, we're not seeing as many people coming back into public service. And so it's very challenging trying to recruit. And then we know that the salaries have also, we're having to reach out, trying to entice those from counties that are not necessarily next to us, which we typically try and compare to. And so it has been the recommendation from an outside recruiter, to be able to successfully fill this position, we do have to adjust the salary. And so I'm bringing before you today a request to increase the salary to 135 annually.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Any questions by the board members? Public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Entertain a motion from a board member. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we, we have a second by Mr. Toffnelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Supervisor's announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Ms. Callaway.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Mr. Garamendi.
Thank you. I attended the RCRC Annual Meeting and Conference in Monterey on the 28th, 29th, 30th. And the meeting on the 1st is very informative. I will attend the executive committee meeting tomorrow. Sacamout. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing announced at the expense of the county. Mr. Toffnelli.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Fulendorf.
Yes, we attended CAG last week in CTA, myself and Supervisor Toffnelli. The route on the CTA for the bus transit was approved by the board, by the CTA board. Some routes due to COVID impacts have been removed, but it is still a dial ride. So just because it's not on the current map does not mean that you cannot request for the bus to come and pick you up in your area. So dial ride is anywhere across the county, even if it's not on the current route that's been proposed. The board will continue to look at that as COVID changes and people start becoming more active and taking transit. And then I attended with staff, thank you, Gina and Julie, an HOA meeting in Copperopolis last week to discuss concerns with the community members in TRIDAM.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. Mr. Garamendi, do you have something further to report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I forgot to thank Economic Development and the county staff and the merchants and vendors of this county that produced a wonderful basket for the RCRC charitable auction. And it was the third highest bid in the entire auction. So it collected well over $2,000 for that. And I want to thank Ms. Galindo and everybody who helped put that together. Thank you very much. Very proud of us.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll call it a day.